All right, red is on. We could go away now. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get this party started. We'll go back. You wanna go back? How about you start the meeting, Lynn?
So, we did bring the policy and the Things to Consider doc and then one of the kind of form, what do we call it?
It's a-
I was gonna say a confirmation form, but that's not what it's called.
Kind of a consent form?
Yeah.
A consent to discuss?
We took all of that to the board and just kinda talked through where the direction and where we were going. I didn't really feel like there was feedback one way or the other, did you?
No, the board did state that if, you know, we adopt whatever modifications Amy White wanted, which are still unclear, we can, and as long as we shore everything up, we can send it out for parent input.
Right, and so-
They didn't have any qualms over the policy at all?
The board.
The board did.
Good, yeah. And Lisa did talk to Amy White, who's the attorney, and we were hoping to get what her perspective was in writing. Normally she'll go through the policy and kinda ready to get and say, I agree with this, have concerns here. We haven't been able to get that from her. We've talked to her a few times and she just had some follow-up questions, but we still haven't been able to get anything in writing. But the only thing, kinda her two points were that any kinda counseling services, so if there's gender counseling, anything that's between a parent and the child and the Heritage Health, and so the district can't say no to, I mean, whatever they decide, they decide. We don't get to say no to that. And then her other recommendation was essentially if we're a part of any of the intake, so some of these signed copies, then we assume more liability versus allowing Heritage Health just to do their thing and then whatever happens within that is between them and the parent. So, that was kinda the gist, but because we don't have it in writing, it's, I don't know which parts of it she didn't like or not like, or so.
Well, and some of that seems odd, like, I get what she's saying about trying to keep separation of church and state, if you will, right? But at the same time, the point of the signed thing for the district was to cover the district.
Correct.
So I wondered-
But in her mind, she, right now, we're not a part of the process, we just are-
But we are.
Well, in her mind, so we talked her through our process of we'll give a, here's your form, here's your resource doc with, you can go to any counselor, you can go to, you know, here's all that. But then, once parents decide, parents make contact with Heritage Health and then the district is removed. And she said, if you, if you start entering into more down that road and you're a part of that conversation, you assume more liability that way. Versus, right now, it's just a, you facilitate the connection and then you're out. Then if a conversation happens-
And she understood that this third party was occupying our buildings on our campuses.
She asked that question, like, basically-
I just don't know.
You're giving them space, so, I mean, and again, we don't have it in writing, so.
Right, but ultimately, I mean, the buck stops at the district.
But I specifically asked her the question, so if a parent, if the child brings up some gender concerns or questions or topics and that conversation happens, you know, and we have policies that says that that can't happen at school and she's like, that's their, that's up to them, that's their business. That's between them and the parent, district's not involved in that. So, it would be this, in her mind, it's the same as-
Okay.
Than going to, you know, Heritage Health building somewhere else, it's there, a private-
And if they were going to Heritage Health and it is completely outside of the district, then they can do, they would follow Heritage Health's rules. Because they're all in districts properly, the intention is for them to stay within the lanes that the district has told the parents, we're gonna navigate it. So, that's where I think it's kind of-
And it's not my interpretation or her interpretation.
Oh, I'm sure it isn't.
It sort of seems like with her interpretation, what's the point of us even making a policy then?
She asked that question.
Yeah.
Well, their MOU requires a policy.
Right, so, I mean, she, so she see, but she doesn't see the point of it. I mean, whether through the MOU, I mean, she asked that question, so, again, but I just, it would've been nice to just have it in writing, so it's not mine.
Exactly.
Is she going to, does she normally, like, do that for you? Or she just not had time, is that what she's saying?
Well, it's been a couple of weeks, so I just, I think she's buried and, yeah, so.
Yeah, 'cause it would be good to have something written.
And Lisa talked to her as well, I just think she's busy, so Lisa sent her a reminder today even, like, can we make sure we get that in writing? Or she sent it to her yesterday, I guess, yesterday or today, so.
Well, Lisa didn't chime in with any corrections, so. And the, I mean, I get, I think you're right, her point of contention is probably is bullet point F. But all we're asking for is the consent form that they're gonna do services on district property. It has nothing to do with consent forms in their own building.
But in, from her, what she said to us is Heritage Health is a, you know, they're private, so what they do within their business and it's between them and the parent, that's their business. District is not a part of it, so we can't dictate what gets said, not said. She's like, when you're entering in there, you ask between the parent and Heritage Health, not the district. So, you don't get to dictate what happens, 'cause it's a private company and it's between, it's the agreement between them and the parent.
So, if we had, I mean, this is like a creepy third party, like, going out in left field. So, we have an HVAC company come in to do repairs and they do something nefarious with a student in a bathroom, the district has no liability there?
We absolutely would.
What's the difference?
Well, you're contracting out with an HVAC person, I would assume, and so you're, they're someone that you've entered into.
And we have entered into something here. It's the exact same principle.
But I think that's because that thing is illegal, having a conversation about something is not, that's what, I mean-
So, if a counselor does something nefarious with a student in a session, is the district liable?
It would depend on what it is, I guess.
Why? If it's nefarious, something shouldn't be done?
If it's our counselor or if it's a therapist.
If it's part of this MOU, if we've entered into an MOU agreement-
If the definition of nefarious is illegal, then it, we are liable if it's-
If it happens on premises?
If it's subjective nefarious, then I think it's subjective, is what Amy would say.
Okay, however, if we have a policy that specifically states this will not happen and we bring someone on and someone violates that policy with one of our students-
She said that.
And we've told our, our parents.
I, I'm just telling you what she said.
I think she's way off base, because I think there is tons of lawyers that would slam lawsuits left and right and win. If we're just like, mm, not our problem, because we have this MOU and they're a third-party company over there. I just, I don't agree with that at all. Sorry.
I'm with you. Can we get another opinion?
Too much.
Lawyer? I can have, try Megan and have Megan about look at it.
Yeah, I don't care.
The, that attorney from the Pacific Justice Institute looked at it also and she, the only concern she had was that one part was taking off by Idaho statute, or per Idaho statute.
Who are you talking about, who looked at it?
It's an attorney named Kate Hartley at the Pacific Justice Institute. They're a nonprofit and they do free law work for different, lots of different things.
So, you contacted them personally, not the school board?
Right.
Is that how that worked?
Yeah, just to get their two cents, get another perspective.
I can send it to Megan.
So, why did she say, because of the Idaho statute, it hasn't gone into law yet?
It has.
No, it has. The one, the counseling, the whole, there was the talk of is gender-affirming counseling covered? Like, is that also prohibited because of the Idaho, new Idaho statute?
It's not.
And it technically isn't, but that doesn't mean that the district can't have their own rules, 'cause if we just take off as mandated by Idaho statute, you're not going against the law. The law doesn't say everybody must provide gender-affirming counseling, so-
Right.
The policy could be what we want, just you take off the statute.
Okay, so take that portion off right there.
Well, that one, care, you're fine, it was G, the highlighted one, the counseling.
Okay, so gender care is mandated by statute?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, the counseling one?
That was her, her only feedback.
Couldn't she give us something in writing?
Yeah, she did.
Because I think we should be getting things in writing from anyone that's giving any, especially since this is a pretty controversial policy.
I can have Megan-
This MOU with mental health?
No, this policy. 'Cause not everyone agrees that is sitting here today, that we should have that in there. So, I think, and I think also to cover the district's spot, you need to have anything that we're having done or recommended legally-wise in writing.
So, I can send this to Megan and then ask Amy to, I would just, I mean, I can't tell you which parts of it she, so that's why I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
I can give you a general what her concern was, but the actual parts, we didn't, she didn't go through it with us that detailed. In her mind, this is a contract between, they're using our facility. She referenced it like a facility use, like, this is between them and the parent and, you know, obviously if laws are broken, laws are broken, that's different. But as far as conversations that are happening, they're allowed to have conversations if they, if that's what they, you know, the parent, they agree to that, that's their contract, not ours.
Correct.
Our contract is specific to access.
But if the parent has also said, no, I don't want you talking about this.
But that's between, if-
Correct, that would be between the provider and them. But the concern is that if the, if the parent says, don't talk about this and the provider's like, well, I'm not listening to you, and they're on school grounds and we have a policy that says, you can't do that, well, the liability would then, yes, be on Heritage Health, because we have said, no, you're not gonna do that. The parent has said, no, you're not gonna do that. But then they have stepped out of their lane and done whatever they want on school grounds. That, I think, is where the district is covered. In fact, that, no, we're supporting the parent, we're saying the parent has absolute and total control here. So, I don't know how the district would then become liable when the district is supporting what the parent wants.
She's not arguing that, as long as that's what the parent wants.
Right.
She says, though, if we're going against the parent, then we're taking on more liability. If the parent's fine with that and we're saying you can't do it.
Okay.
And she said, it's a contract between you and the parent, so you're following the parent's wants. The district is not a part of that. Other than we're housing, we're giving them space, it's like a facility use. So, if something happens playing football, the district's not liable. They have their own insurance, they have their, it's the same concept as a facility use.
Okay, I'm going in, we're doing different directions here.
So, I think it just, it would be easier if we had each bullet point, like what she normally does or she gives you. This is, I'm concerned about this, this is the language I would use. I mean, it's just, I'm trying to counter.
It's just, this is now gonna bump off until August.
We can still, I think we can still send it out for feedback.
Okay.
Unless you guys aren't comfortable with that and see what-
I don't think we should send it out till feedback, till we get really something from whatever the lawyers say. 'Cause that's what we said we were gonna do last time. And, you know, someone has, has told you something, but we still don't have anything in writing and I just think that, I just don't think you should, in my personal opinion, as a, as a person here today, I do not think that we should send this out until we've actually gotten the okay through the lawyers, because then what if they come back and then they say, well, we shouldn't do this at all? Then we just have to resend it back out again. So, I think that we need to decide what we're gonna send.
The policy will be put in place. It was part of the motion to enter into the MOU. The MOU from Heritage Health states that the district has to have a policy governing-
I'm not saying that there shouldn't be a policy.
Okay.
I'm saying that we should wait till we hear what the lawyers say and then-
Right.
Yeah, and then we can put it in the policy or take whatever out of the policy and then we can present what we know to be, as what we recommend the full policy is. Because I think until we get actual feedback from the lawyers, which is what we talked about, we were going to do, and I think that, I think that we need to do that, because I do think this is super controversial throughout the whole world, not just about the table sitting here today. And I think that we need to make sure that we've said, well, we've already talked to our lawyers and they said that this is okay.
Did you get, you have from your person in writing? Okay, will you send that to me and I can add it to the faculty?
Yeah.
And then I'll send it to Megan. And then I'll keep, I'll keep trying with Amy.
Yeah, see if Amy could put something in writing too, that'd be great. And then we could just send it out, be done and send it out once.
Our process typically is, just so you know, is when we send it out, when we get the feedback, we go line by line. So, we always make changes based on the feedback. So, what we send out is not necessarily-
Right, what we're gonna end up with.
Because we do make tweaks, which is why I said, well, we could, because we do make tweaks, but if everybody's-
Based on parent input.
Right, if everybody's more comfortable to wait. I mean, I can do whatever you want, but um-
I can go either way, 'cause I see, I totally see your point.
Right, 'cause-
And then at the same time, I'm sure that the board is eager to keep things moving.
Sure.
So, the flip side of that point would be, well, let's get parent input and then take that with the lawyer's input and then put it out, send it to the board.
Again, I apologize, I have, this has not been a lack of effort trying, it just, I can't like introduce what they-
Right, right.
Without being more annoying than I already have been.
Right.
So, well then, I guess we'll move on to the things to consider.
So, are we holding off until I can get this to Megan and Amy?
I guess.
Okay, is that what you guys all?
It's not what I reported, I would've wanted to go out to the parents, 'cause then we could just make the changes based on parent input and attorney input all at once. Because we do allow a two-week turnaround time, which means that we're not going to get back to it until the first week of August anyway. So, if we wait-
And then we'd have to make that change to be able to get it onto the August board meeting. If we don't send it out, we won't make it to the August board meeting.
Correct, which means then it's September.
Yeah.
Well, and so what happens if it goes into September? It just continues to drag on or is there, do we have like an actual deadline to have this done by? I mean, I know we'd like to, but is there an actual deadline you have to have it done by?
We should have it done before, before the start of school.
Correct.
For the MOU, to start, the new MOU.
Yeah.
So that when does the new MOU go into that, in August?
So, our goal is to try to have it, at worst-case scenario, done by the August board meeting.
And we've been, I think, four or five meetings on this one policy.
Right.
Well, I just think you're gonna get a whole bunch of people saying, is this legal, is this, you know?
Which I think is okay, 'cause we know that, and so Megan is really good and I can send it to her tonight and just say, please, can you get this to me? And so, I think if the feedback comes that, we, we know that, so we'll, you know, the next time we meet. I personally would like to send it out only because we, if we don't, there's no way to hit the August. And it, the MOU then goes into play without having a policy attached and then, and then I feel like we're gonna be, it just, the optics look bad.
Yeah, well, and I guess too, if we did-
You make a good point, I get that, but I just-
If we did send it out and the feedback from the parents all matches the feedback from the lawyers, then that would make our next task much simpler.
Correct.
So, that might be a pro to send it out too.
What do you think, Dee?
Um, I think we should send it out and just get feedback, it's okay. We can just put a disclaimer on it saying that this is not final, that legal is reviewing as we speak, but we also wanna move this along and get parent feedback while we get legal feedback.
I'd agree.
And that this is not official policy.
That would be a good idea.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, that would probably be okay. Yeah. And Dee, are you another parent?
Yes.
Here, okay.
Send out to parents, okay.
I just never know who is like a school person and a parent person or all the other-
It's only parents tonight.
Yeah, it is only parents tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm still there. So, my question is, am I just sending out the policy or am I sending out accompanying docs?
I don't know, let's look at the accompanying docs and see if we want them.
So, is, um, are, um, did Amy say too that she doesn't think we should do the accompanying docs?
She didn't say anything about those.
Okay, okay. I just wondered when she said we shouldn't, like, get too much more into it? If we do all that, how she felt about that part of it too?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if, based on my interpretation, I don't think she'd have an issue with the Things to Consider doc, but like, she would have an issue with the signed one, 'cause in her mind, then we're assuming more liability.
Right, that's what she was kind of alluding to.
I mean, and this, I don't, this is just Things to Consider.
No, I think this is a good, yeah, I read through this too, yeah.
So, I just went through and put some uniformity to the language so that it matched the policy. And then, has everyone, Dee, have you had a chance to read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we got down here to the questions, I didn't remove anybody's questions. I just rewrote some of them, so they kinda came out a little more clear. The, the trans, I don't like that word. Um, instead of, how does my child transition to and from class? How does my child go to and return from mental health services without others knowing what my child is doing?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. What's that word? How do I communicate absences to mental health providers? Who tells the mental health provider if my child is absent from school? So, which, do you like three or four? Four or three, which one's clearer?
I like three.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably three.
Uh, who will know, is my child is receiving mental health services? Uh, does the district staff know why my child is receiving mental health services? Where will mental health services be received? Uh, you, I don't know, do you like the word delivered as opposed to received?
I think received is better.
Received is better.
Yeah, than delivered.
Uh, where will mental, okay, how will mental health services be delivered? That was the second rewriting of those.
So, what, like, is the same as six?
Uh, it is, but it isn't. I don't know.
I was gonna say, how and where is two different things?
They are. And how could it imply what, are you doing CBT, DBT, you know, solution-focused therapy? What are you doing with my kid? So, but I don't know, most parents are gonna really think of that.
Wouldn't that be, like, that's part of their- Provider-parent conversation, so.
But this is like the district prompting them to ask the questions, right?
Well, this was the document that you had stated you were, you felt that we needed to provide. So, um, these are things for parents to consider.
Potential questions too.
Maybe-
Correct.
The how, maybe what types of mental health services are offered?
Yeah, I just thought it was kind of the, like, the parents are not gonna know that, like, they won't know what kind of response would be given, yeah. 'Cause I was a little like, what does how mean?
Yeah. Well, the red's me, so I don't know. I like my red. Uh, what type of mental health services though?
Oh, okay, you already did that.
Maybe I rewrote seven. I don't remember.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is my child able to be absent from mental health services to participate in school function or activity?
I don't even understand that question. So, like, if somebody, if it's your day to have Heritage Health come, but there's gonna be a school party, does, who makes that decision? Does the kid get to, does the parent get to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, can we blow off counseling so the kid can stay in class for the birthday party?
I would hope so.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the requirements are, I guess. And that's something a parent can talk to the provider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, number nine, Julie, right, in that one?
Number nine, will mental health services take priority over my child participating in school function or activity?
I like that one better.
Okay.
And I just, I think that's a parent.
If my child misses mental health services, can my child still participate in extracurricular activities? That, I, I don't know if there's a way to-
I don't think there's even a-
There's not even a-
Yeah, I don't think that that would even-
What about, though, if my child misses mental health services, can they make them up? Because that would be, I've done counseling, I've always, it's one of the things I ask, hey, if I miss a counseling session, can I make it up at the end? Can you squeeze one in?
Okay.
She comes just once a day to the schools. I mean, once a, one day a week to a school.
Right.
So, are you talking about like in, during that day?
Like, if, if-
Extended?
Like, if somebody was, like, if somebody else was absent, then you can, if there was a, like, a time to do some makeup or whatever.
It's a question of interest.
Yeah.
Right.
And even if the answer is no, then you ask a question.
Yeah.
Maybe the makeup is the parent transferring, transporting the child to Heritage Health.
Possibly.
It's an option.
Right.
Can my child, can my child?
What?
It's twice.
Oh, well, you know, it's 'cause I'm special. There we go. Can I, as a parent, decline mental health services at any time without risk of retaliation from the school, my child's teacher, or the mental health provider? How does my child make up for, oopsies, what?
Oh, no, that's instructional, it's on, in classwork, okay, so that's-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I think as a parent, I would be curious, you know, is my child gonna be docked academically because we're doing this?
Yeah.
And how do they make it up? Am I required to complete a release of information form? Which we already say that in the policy. Uh, will the school district receive information regarding the mental health services my child's receiving? Will anyone from the school district be communicating with my child's mental health provider about my child? If I have concerns regarding my child's mental health provider? And/or? The mental health services being received, who do I talk to about my concern? Okay, so we're, oh, that's cool, we're down to fifteen questions. And then up here, I can just go ahead and remove these.
So, is this, and I emailed this to Lynn, so sorry, I'm repeating stuff, Lynn, if you were gonna respond to me, but, um, is this then an item that would go in that list of A through I in the packet that would go to the parent? Okay, so I figured we were doing here.
Do you want to take off direct?
No, I didn't leave that there.
Can you scroll back down to the questions, there's one, we might've fixed it. How does my child go to and from to?
It's in there near the top.
Oh, there, number two, yeah.
Without others knowing, do we, do you think it should say other, without other students knowing?
Is it specific just to students or?
Well, I think you'd wanna know others too, I mean, do you really want other teachers up in your child's business and stuff like that too, you know?
Would parents understand that others means?
I would think if they would, I mean, I guess I would, that I would think of students and everybody. There's a lot of people that are hanging around the school.
Okay.
Don't you think? I don't know, that's what I would think.
Students, staff, members. How about that?
Sure.
Transients?
Right?
Janitor.
The lunch lady.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, my only other thought on this one, which we can just table at this point until we get other feedback, um, was if we, if we get the feedback from the parents and lawyers and we decide we're not putting in anything, I guess, about like the gender counseling part of things, then I think there would be an argument to be made to put a question like that in here that would say something like, can the counselors discuss gender identity as part of their mental health care provision? So that, then it's very clear, the district is making it very clear to the parents that this is- So that, then it's very clear, the district is making it very clear to the parents that this is something that could be discussed.
This is an option.
You need to talk about this, this has nothing to do with us or our gender policy at the school, so. Anyway, food for thought, we could address that later.
Yeah, I actually was thinking of one.
Yeah.
Okay, well, do we wanna address it later, do we just want to put that?
I think we should address it, yeah, later, if we're good, if it gets put in the policy, then that should be added to it. Right, cause if it goes in the policy, then it would be a moot point to put it on this, right?
Or. I don't know, because. I don't know.
I guess the answer, I guess that we would know the answer to it, so that would be good.
Uh, one of the questions could be, am I allowed input on what is discussed with my child?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, yes, yes, yes.
Or is and is not, maybe? Any other questions or? And then the other item was this form, consent to discuss form, which I think we need to add to the policy.
Where did you get this?
Uh, Nate made it, and then I revised it.
I reformed.
I thought that we were just gonna have a form saying that they received all these, all of our handout. That was all we were gonna require of parents, and then that would go in a file so that we were covered, showing that we had given them our, um, packet of the forms that we discussed.
I think we talked about that that was the only form that would come back to the school.
Right.
But there were other parents, I think last time, who wanted another form that where they could officially say, here's what I'm comfortable with the counselors talking about.
Well, I think, one of the things that I guess I'm super like confused about, this whole, this whole process is, uh, everyone is just focusing on the gender identity. That is not, uh, uh, why has this policy become about gender identity? Instead of just about having counseling services at our facility?
I think because of the culture we live in and it's so prevalent throughout things and there's lots of contagion, social contagion with this and concern from a lot of parents about what is being discussed with my kids, I think that's the whole reason why the gender policy got put in place for the district in the first place. So I think it's just a hot button topic.
I think it's a huge hot topic in America today, yeah, but I don't know that this should particularly focus. I mean, it just seems like over and over and over, we're focusing on it. Instead of focusing on, like we talked about last time, about handing out all the information and just having a parent sign a form so that the school is covered, all we're interested in is a school covering. I thought that's what the policy was about, is covering the school. Not about our own personal, our own personal decisions on what we would or would not like our child to see, do, or whatever.
I agree.
Okay.
So what I think this form should probably just do is, we could probably just add something that says, I received the packet that has these forms in it, instead of calling out and having them sign a date each policy.
Except this isn't coming back to the school.
Oh, and this is not coming back to?
No, it says not, this form should re- be returned to the mental health provider, not to any school district.
That is not, that is not okay, because we are not doing the intake, we as a school people are not doing the intake for counselors. It all hap- the counselor is all between the parents, the counselor, and the children. That, this is, th- then you're stepping into the counselor's area. I, I think this is a bad idea, I don't, I personally do not agree with this form, and I do not think we should put this form in there.
What do you see as the downsides to, I'm a little confused.
Part of it is that I don't think that it should go, we, as the, heritage health sees people as a couns- it's, it's just like, it's just like having a medical problem, a medical problem is just like having, um, a psychiatric issue. So it's all between the patient, the, the family, if it's, if they're children, and the provider. It, that we cannot, we should not be mandating what they all talk about. It is none of our business, and you as a parent should definitely be involved in whatever is going on between the counselor and your child. And that's our jobs as parents, I think, to, to allow, uh, the counselor to discuss what we think is appropriate or what we think is not appropriate, and if you don't think it's appropriate, then your, your child doesn't have to see that counselor, I mean, there's counselors like everywhere that your child could go see. And depending upon what kind of counselor you want to, if you want to see someone at your church, you can certainly do that. Or, or you can see just another private counselor, or, I mean, there's all sorts of different counselors you have to see. But what I'm, I just think that we're stepping into people's personal business, this isn't. It's a, it's like a whole hip thing that we're getting involved in, and I just don't think we, we should be.
What's the purpose of this form? Somebody remind me, cause I missed last one.
Nate wanted this form, that's what the purpose of this form is. Well, I don't think he's alone, I mean, I, I'm in favor of a form like this also, I, I can tell you.
Personal feelings aside, what is the purpose, the business purpose of this form?
The purpose of this form would be to consent that the counselor could talk to the child about gender identity and sexual orientation, which is addressed in policy thirty two, two eighty one. They could talk to the child about controversial issues and academic freedom. I do not want any of these topics discussed with my child, or none of the above. Okay, so it's, you can talk to him, or you can't talk to him, but as the parent, I'm weighing in. That was heavily stressed.
The idea was that, um, because nobody knows what the intake process is for heritage, because it's not done with any school district employees. Is, if there is something that a parent's uncomfortable with, could there be a situation where they don't bring it up? And then, then the parents upset because there was a discussion that happened that they were not aware of, that was the concern.
And I think too, but, but at one of the recent meetings, and I don't think you were there, so sorry if I'm telling you something that you heard. But there was talk about if your child isn't counseling currently, um, and I think maybe it was you who was, was saying it, and somebody asked, like, could they talk about this with your child, and you weren't sure, and so I think that was where some hairs got raised on parents who were in attendance, including Nate. To think, how could we arm parents to be able to know for sure how to answer that question? And I think this was a stab at the solution to that.
Yeah.
And that, and that this wouldn't be, you know, given back to the district, so it still would be between the parent and the counselor.
I, I'm gonna, I'm just going to say this. I don't think the district should step into this place.
Okay.
I think you should push it on heritage health to do something similar. And have, arm them with this, and then if they don't do it, then they're liable. It's gonna be between the parent and heritage health.
So if they don't get the permissions from the parents to violate our school policies, then it's on heritage health.
You need to write this stuff into the MOU as well.
Can we put it in the requirements in the policy that we had? Like what she's saying, we require the heritage health.
But here's the thing, the policy is not a heritage health policy.
I understand that.
It's for mental health providers. So we can state that mental health providers need to go above and beyond with respect to these topics and make sure that you have permissions.
But that is all discussed at the intake with heritage health, the parent and the child. Well, I did do it, and it, it was all discussed, what is going to be discussed, what, what is expected of them, what is expected of me, what is expected of my child. Aren't you a, are you a therapist, or, do you do therapy? I'm sorry.
I do.
Okay, so that's what you do, I assume, with your pa- your patient, when they first come, is you do an intake. You decide what the boundaries are and what you're going to do through this whole process. And that's what, that's what, um, is being done at heritage health for our intake. I had three different meetings with Sierra before she ever saw my daughter, and my husband was involved in all of it. So, I mean, it's just like any counseling, and I don't know if anyone else has done personal counseling, but personal counseling, you go and that you decide like what your, it, what your issues are, how you want to address them.
But you're the adult in that situation.
Right, but I was, I was there with my daughter, and we made it clear, like, the things that we were comfortable with or were not comfortable with. Yes, yeah.
But, but then at the other meeting, didn't you say that?
I said, my daughter does not tell me everything that is in counseling, but if I ever made her do that, she would never say anything in counseling. I mean, that's how counseling works. I don't tell other people what I do in my counseling, and, but I talk to Sierra, I have updates with Sierra, me and my husband do during this whole entire process.
The counselor, Sierra. Do you know, and I, you know, I'm really asking, cause I don't know, and from the conversation last time, now I'm confused. Do you know if Sierra would talk about, and, and we'll use the hot topic still, genders issues with your child?
No, I do not know, uh, specifically, cause I never asked. Yeah, I never asked, because that wasn't something that I was concerned about with what's going on with my daughter, yeah. Yeah, so I think, I mean, just from my perspective, that's where my concern would be that, to, to make sure that parents know if that's important to them to ask.
Yes, so I think. But I guess if you put it in the things to consider, Doc, you need an acknowledgement, Doc, then, because if it's a question, if you put it in there, these are things to consider, um, you gotta push it back on heritage health, you've gotta get it in the MOU.
Okay.
This is mucky. And, and.
I hear you, but this isn't gonna be able to happen this year.
When I, I know, but it's, it's really mucky.
But if you put it in the things considered, Doc, to Jacklitt's point.
That would be fine.
Then it's some, you are equipping parents to ask a question.
And that's fine, but.
If that's what the concern is, is to ask the question.
Put it in the things to consider.
You know what I mean?
Right.
And armor with the statute, give them the link to the statute and the things to consider. Give them everything they need, but don't make them sign things and give it back to them, because that's just.
And that's where Amy was, if you, that's where it gets muddy, cause then we start taking on.
Yes, yes.
So I guess one of my questions is to, is this form, this form will go to the parent? And then who is the parent supposed to ask these questions up?
To the mental health provider.
To heritage health. This is, this is the, okay.
So if I'm a brand new person.
So this person is not gonna come back to the counselor at the school and ask all these questions.
The idea is that if you're considering this service at that very first intake.
These are questions you may look at.
If you have, if you're not sure about this, you know, not everyone's done their, like, here are some things to consider and questions to ask so that you're fully equipped to make a, a sound decision.
You're informed.
It's an informed decision.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know, I'm just writing words. I don't know what this needs to say.
I, um, I know this, back to Kim's statement, um, I mean, let's get out of the box and just put the gender piece in a box for a second, what are other controversial, like, I hear parents talk about concerns with the suicide conversation.
I was gonna say suicide.
So instead of this, I mean, what are some, what are some hot topic kinds of things?
Sexual assault.
Yeah, we could say, will the mental health provider discuss, sorry, discuss topics, uh, or controversial topics, I E, and then list like.
Cause I feel like we're making this a theme, but there are other things that parents might be concerned about.
Social media, tying all of that into social media, if there's one thing I could eliminate, it would be that.
Right, I'm with you.
We have eliminated it in our house.
Well, I mean, worldwide.
One of the things is though, too, when, uh, like, we talked with Sierra, is that they are bound by law, obviously, to disclose stuff right away and report things, and, yeah, cause they're all licensed. So, yeah, there are a lot of things that they are, they have to tell us whether or not.
One of the things I was gonna say is, I mean, it's the same as a teacher, so.
Right, right.
When I was a principal and, um, we had to do a CPS report, and I remember prior to, and the family ended up being removed um, from the home, and I remember prior to the student ever telling me anything. I did say, I need you to know, transparent, I have, I'm, so if you tell me something.
Right.
And I gave an example, I will have to, this can, there will be certain things that you tell me that I have to share.
Right.
Other things will be private, but if you share this, I, I just need you, cause I did not want her to feel like I was gonna break her trust. So, I, I think, I think that's pretty standard.
I think so too, we have to do that as nurses also too, there's things we have to.
And then I'm gonna spin this whole, um, gender issue. Um, there's a lot of kids. Hetero kids that actually are having a rough time navigating a lot of, like, the LGBTQ community and everything that's happening, because they don't know how to talk about it, they don't know how to present about it, and so that's another, that's another spin on it. It's not just like students that are having, you know, gender identity challenges. It's also students that don't have them, but they don't know how to relay, how to talk, how to communicate with those students either.
But I think that's just, that's social pragmatics, it's that ability to navigate society.
Yeah.
I agree tremendously, it's not all just about gender identity. Well, and that sometime, and kids need to talk about, well, people in general need to talk about, um, how, how the world sees all that. If that is something that's really a problem with them, or if that's a problem with society, if that, if they're just confused. They just don't even know how to navigate their sort of things, and I think, and that's why I think counseling is so important. So that people have the opportunity to be able to do that.
In this whole thing of.
And figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we're in a world right now where, you know, my threshold for tolerance of a topic, i- it might be fine, but then the very next day it's not, and with somebody else, it's different, and, um, I mean, kids and adults are trying to navigate, like, what can I say? What can I say, when you're in a social setting, you know, if I am trying to be funny, I mean, we're in such a council culture right now that I could say one thing with a group of people and it's funny and fine, and everyone recognizes I'm joking, and in another situation, it's not appropriate. And I'm not even talking about professional settings, I'm talking about social dynamics.
Right.
We're just, it's, you know, and then me, the stuff people post on social media, if you try to then regurgitate that in public somewhere, I mean, it just, it's a, I think it's a, we're living in a really difficult, hard.
Right, everything that you, that is said, somebody can misconstrue it, I can pull out one piece.
And it can all be taped and recorded.
I mean, I think all of the kid, this is a really hard time for, you know, I, I think adults as well. But I think for kids, it's just, you know, how, like self harms are perfect, I'm glad you put that up there.
Well, we, we don't know what to do as parents either.
Right.
We don't know what the exact right thing to do, whereas when I was a kid, it was by and large the exact same that it was for my parents when they were kids.
Right, right.
No different, I mean, we still had, I had rotary phones, like, you know.
And the twenty foot long cord.
Exactly, like it was, it was mostly the same.
And I remember, you know, you could, you would joke around with kids and it was joking, and for five kids, it could be joking, and for five others, it's bullying. I mean, it's hard to, it's just, I think it's a hard rule to navigate.
And that's the same, but with the bullying, social media makes it to where it doesn't stop. There's a picture, there's, you know, and it, it just doesn't go away. There's a picture, there's, you know, and it, it just doesn't go away, people don't forget about it a week later.
Yep.
When we were kids, they, they just did.
Well, and everyone has phones, yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I just think that there's a lot of topics, to Kim's point, that could be, um, hot, hot topics for kids and.
And it's different for everyone, it's different for everyone, and it's all scary, it's all scary.
It could also too be like, you know, I know in the K five, uh, area, because I know a lot of teachers, they talk about the fact that. They have kids that bounce off the walls and the kid starts crying going, I have no idea why I do this and I can't stop it. And the teacher's like, what am I supposed to do with that?
Do you think that in number five, it's worthwhile, I know you noted abuse, but is it worthwhile to say something about sexual abuse?
You can say physical slash the sexual.
Yeah.
Because that's something that is, is something that girls do not.
Do a slash, slash verbal. Or emotional, emotional, because that's just as bad as everything else.
I just think that, again, to the point where you're just being really transparent, that. Your child could disclose something, whether you choose to believe it or not, I am, I mean, I've had to have that conversation with parents, like, I don't get to investigate it. It's not my job to determine if it's right or wrong or indifferent, I have to report it and it's no, I, I don't know what happens behind closed doors, it's not a judgment call. I am just legally responsible, if your child said it, I have to do it.
And I, I don't think that's wrong because I think we have to err on the side of the parents and guardians. There's just no other way to do it, these aren't sovereign citizens, they're kids, they're different, um, so I think that's the only way to go about it.
But that's not easy.
No, I'm not saying it is, but.
Especially when it's your kid, you know what I mean, but I can't tell you how many times, you know, a kid's come in and it's like, well, my uncle, my da, 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 and you're just. I don't, you know, we don't get to make that decision of, do I think you're telling the truth or lying, it's, we have to report.
Well, many are telling the truth and many times that's how you find out what's going on, but then there's some that aren't, I know it is super, I mean, that's why people have to do investigations.
Right.
Because you just don't ever know. But you can't not.
Those are just uncomfortable conversations that I think you spotlight. I like that better.
That looks way better, yeah.
What do you think?
I think it's great.
Mm-hmm, I think that's good.
Good, you wrote it.
Everyone's input. Okay. Just so we know, and it doesn't like go out the door.
Okay, so when we send this out for, um, input to parents, am I sending this out with the things to consider doc, just the policy? What am I sending out?
What would be the purpose of sending the things to consider one out, just to get, if there were more questions to add?
Something we didn't think of?
Yeah.
But to your point, we're not sending out all the other forms, uh, I see where you're going with that.
Right.
I think so too, yeah.
Okay, so just the policy?
I think just the policy.
Did we add this to our A through I or whatever in the policy?
Do we need to?
No, we do, we need to.
I think we've referenced it, but, um. Are we gonna make it a live link?
We need to actually, well. Yeah, I would suppose you could make it a live link. But if there's no policy number, because if there's a policy number, then is it a policy? Because then it, is it a?
Procedure, you mean?
Well, it's not really a procedure though, and it's not a form, it's just a informational.
Informational resource.
Yeah.
It's a resource.
Yeah, we could call it informational resource, things to consider. Are you talking about how to list it in the packet? Is that what you're talking about?
No, actually, I'm trying to figure out if it's going under the board policies.
Oh, what's, oh, gotcha.
And if it is, then we give it a number, otherwise.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Oh, no, it shouldn't be under board policies, it's a parent resource. I, when I was asking you live link, I was thinking in the actual policy, do we just make it a PDF live link?
Well, that's, yeah, because all these, we've got cross references and other references, I guess. But here, actually, this should be highlighted because we need to put the information there. The, oops, that's wrong. Um, because, uh, Ramona was saying, you know, the.
You might as well change made of August.
Yeah, there we go, uh, yeah.
That's some wishful thinking.
Okay, so then you can just, uh, link that again to that. I'll highlight it for you, just because I like to highlight things. There we are. I guess I wish we used. All right, so we can move on. Do we list it in A through I, did I miss it? A through. Or are we just putting it at the end? Okay, um.
Oh, put it at the end, yeah.
I'll correct that.
I really did the bottom.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me and my boys work on sending this out.
So how does it go out?
So, um, Lisa will send it out on the Skylark and typically, um, if there was a like existing policy, then the new policy. But because this is the only policy we have, it'll just go out and then there will be an attachment to do a Google form and then with just questions and they'll respond.
Where does the Skylark, I assume it goes to parents?
It goes to anybody connected to the schools.
Okay, but what about, so does it not go to the general public then?
Mm-mm.
No, okay.
There's no way for us to access the general public that's not connected to a school.
So it goes to parents and so, okay.
I mean, some grandparents, some if they, you know, if you're, again, if you're attached to a kid.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But you have to be attached to a school.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay.
So, where are we at on our?
So if we go to, um, so, uh, can we just do twenty seven hundred P high school graduation? So just look at and make sure everybody's okay with it.
It's one of the ones that were.
So are we just going through things that are already, that just are due to be looked at too, is that what all the, a bunch of these policies are?
There is a laundry list of policies that are required to be annually reviewed by the board.
Okay.
Um, we are very behind on that, um. All of our policies need to be reviewed, um, some of them are extremely old and not even with current law.
Okay.
So we sort of prioritize them based on requests from the district and we just keep trying to plow through them all.
But sometimes community members will ask for something or somebody else, like, I have a couple of policies that, like, the next one I'll bring up is the auditors. The, our CFO has a policy that needs to be updated based on new federal guidelines and so there needs to be a little verb in there and so stuff like that and so.
Okay, just wondered how we got all these.
We can get her to work on the eight hundred policies that Brian refused to ever look at.
Do you want me to talk to her about that?
Yes.
Eight thousand, you mean?
I, you, whatever they are. The ones for the CFO.
Yep.
Okay, um. I'm curious though, because you have the P up, but you don't have the policy up.
Yeah, so the, the actual policy, we're not making any changes to it, it's the same, it doesn't go in the specifics.
Okay.
Yeah, so keep going, scroll down, and this is, that's where we're changing it, right there.
The science?
Nope, the red, right there, three credits, so it was two, and so then a total of five, but we actually require three.
Okay.
And then, so it's a total of six, so that's the only change.
Okay.
Are you okay if we make that change?
Why are you asking just me?
Well, I'm, I was looking at you.
Have we always required those two?
So we have for the last few years, so what happened is, is, um, uh, you're only required so many social studies, uh, credits. But we weren't getting, like, people would do their world history stuff and so we weren't getting enough US history time to get into that. And then we would get to civics, which is a requirement and not be able to answer some of those questions. And so, um, a couple of years ago, the both high schools got together and just said if we could up our US history. Um, and so, um, and make it three credits instead of two, then we would be able to cover all of that and you'd actually get to US history and not just one. Because we were just getting to one, kind of one class, so, um, it's what we've been doing for the last few years, we just never matched the policy with it. And so Lisa asked me to bring it. So everything else is what we've been doing and it's, a lot of this is the law.
So nothing else needs to be changed?
No. So. Oh, what's that in purple? Oh, that, um, so we're, I have to, we are, she.
This was actually looked at in twenty twenty one and it was never completed.
Okay.
That's why there's purple, thank you for acknowledging that.
But I think you're on the, a different draft and.
Well, this is the one that was pulled up for me.
Um, um, then, yeah, this isn't the right line because it was a purple anymore, um.
Let's see, um, here's this one, that's June, here's a copy of it, here, let's look at this one.
Yeah, there were a lot of, remember this is twenty seven. So. Yep, purple's still there.
It is that one.
Purple is still there.
Yeah, I, that's, oh, here, I, I'm learning.
There you go.
Is it the version history thing that I want?
Well, you can just go up to the little block on the top.
Okay. So you worked on it this, on the ten.
I just changed that one little part, but Janelle must have changed it, so that's not what, um.
In February twenty two.
But we never did any.
We never brought it back to the board because we never finished it. And I think if we go and look at what Ms. April Hoy, um.
Let me just, I wanna see if what, if April's stuff is on the.
How do we make this go away?
You have to, uh, just.
Oh, the arrow maybe?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wanna see if what April says is on there, on our current one.
Okay. Okay, because this was, this was never adopted.
Nope.
So this was never in there.
Well, it's referenced in, so in the policy. Policy twenty seven hundred, that was done June tenth, twenty twenty one, we actually put twenty seven hundred P in there and it's, there's the link.
Okay, so August eleventh, twenty twenty is when that was done and then it was revised, but then never brought back. So this is the old one that we have.
But everything that, uh, so go to the one that you have that said draft.
It's definitely has been changed.
Yeah, it's funky, the one, so her early completion of graduation requirements. Class rank, so you have honor roll. I'm trying to find where you are, class rank, it's just, it's not early completion, graduation, or flexible schedule. A student.
So.
And if that's new language, it's not on this one.
Oh, right, so what I'm trying to figure out. Why would April Hoy put this on our document?
Because when Janelle downloaded it, she left it as a live link, so it's their Word document, so it, when April made comments, that's what.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is the early completion of graduation requirements on our old document? No. And the early achievement?
I mean, there is language in there, but it's not, it doesn't match, it's not the exact same.
Okay.
So before we make this change, I want to have the two high schools look at it, if there's any language there.
Okay, so how about?
That's the only part they asked me to change, they didn't say anything, but I guarantee you that, um. This additional part, before we say this is a good to go, I'd want the high school principals to look at it.
Okay. Do we know if the twenty seven hundred P was on any of the updates for?
ISBA?
ISBA, I don't have my computer out, I could lock into them, but I'll tell you. Well, actually, if you open up the, um.
Just the multiple.
Just the multiple, yes, yeah.
They're right down here. Right here?
Yeah. I always do Ctrl R.
What does that do?
Do you do Ctrl R, it takes you to twenty seven hundred. I wanted to Ctrl F. Oh, you're on a Mac, I don't know what that command is for Mac. You just scroll away, you're doing such a fabulous job. Why do you have green on all of this?
This is their deal.
That's bizarre.
This is twenty seven hundred.
Okay, scroll up to P. Scroll. Um, what's that say, I can't read.
Six of twenty twenty two, so.
Okay, so it's been updated after that, so we actually need to pull that up and see. So.
Probably need to merge these and have the high school principals look at this before we do it, so I'm gonna hold off on twenty seven hundred P.
Okay.
Um.
Because, yeah, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I don't wanna let them know, I wanna ask them first.
That would be perfect.
They're the experts specific to these changes.
They are.
They just, I was just told that the only change is the one, but because there's been new, I would rather just double check with them.
I just made the, the thing go away, where's the guide?
Okay, go back to.
That's why we don't let me pop buttons. You do it. Look at you go. Okay, there we are.
Okay, so then, um, my next question is, this one's gonna be super needy, so do we wanna start this one or do we wanna just end early?
The open enrollment? Is there no other ones on there?
Well, there probably are, but.
Twenty three, or twenty two thirty, twenty two forty.
Those were the ones that, uh, Ramona, or maybe somebody else asked, like, they are, the class size, they all kinda go together.
Okay. Oh, forty two hundred.
Now, this was the I crimp one, so we just need to decide, and I think we agreed on that one, remember that the feedback was that. They need to be made aware that they either need to be connected to PTA or they have to get their own private, so we can change that language and send this to the, for feedback and be done with it.
Okay, so. All right.
So it's just, uh, this was all the changes we already made, this is all done, it's that one little paragraph.
Okay, any booster, or any school support organization, or like organizing, obtain it, keep, corollary ability, and the amount of, um. Okay, so the languages, I guess so we can bring you up to speed, Kim. When we went through this policy, it stated that. When we went through this policy, it stated that, that there are no liability, that the district was covering them. My question when we went through the policy was, is that accurate? And nobody knew. Come to find out, the district does not cover the PTAs, the Booster Club, any organizations. And so, we need to make them aware that.
Well, the in, the initial answer that we got was somewhat ambiguous when we have I-CRIP.
Yeah.
So then we did a follow-up, um, with, um, Amy and basically, if they're affiliated with a PTA, then they naturally, but we gave a couple of scenarios and basically it was to cover everybody involved, they need to have, because the, their question is if you're a separate entity and like you do a facility request and you come on and something happens, then you're completely liable, if it's merged with the school and the school is doing the money side of it and all of that, then you fall under their school insurance, but because most of it is, it's not that clean, the response basically, this is what Amy put in there was, um.
But I do think somehow.
So is this if they're having a, like, a, um, um, if they're having some sort of event on school grounds?
Okay.
And how do people get, like, insurance for that?
It's just like football, I mean, there's several companies that will do that, if you're gonna do some kind of.
That do that kind of stuff. So it's pretty easy to get?
Yeah, but.
So we're not making this like hard for people to do or use?
Well, that was, um, Michelle's concern was that there are PTAs and our boosters do so many great things for our,
Right, right, right.
For our schools that she didn't want it to be, but we also don't want them to assume that they're covering and then.
Right.
Or the PTA is all, are they all non-profit? The national level, they, the, uh, like, Twin is a school that just got affiliated with their PTA, the national PTA, and so they, they carry insurance. So if they all affiliate with the national, then they're fine.
Mm-hmm. But booster clubs will have to do it themselves.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But, so like, uh, anything that we're doing in combination with the booster club with the school is covered under the school?
Um, no, not, the way that we were told is if the school took all, like, if we were controlling all the money, maybe they were just volunteering, but everything was funneled through the school, then it would cover our insurance. But if they're handling their own money, their, the school is basically volunteering on the other end, then this, they need to have their own.
Okay.
I mean, essentially, yeah.
Okay, so what is the amount that it needs to be?
What do we require for other, do we have a requirement for other events to be have on, you know, to be had on school ground?
I don't know that we have ever had a number.
I would think it would be a per capita thing, like if you've got ten people that should carry a lot lower premium than five hundred, you know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know the right way to go about that.
I don't feel like they ever set a number.
Well, and I don't know if you just go and you just have an event, if you just go to one of these companies, you said I'm just gonna have an event and then you just buy like a insurance policy for the night.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I, I don't know how it all works, yeah.
When we used to have to buy insurance things just for like a booth at a event, you know, a, a fair or whatever, it was like a million dollars in coverage, it was not expensive, it was like.
Right, but there's just like a standard, that's what I kinda feel too, there's like a standard sort of thing, but I don't know what that is, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like when I was in football, it was like a million dollar policy.
Yeah, public place, people will be there, this is what it is.
Right.
What is the standard insurance coverage?
There you go.
For?
Event booth. Just say that, I think that would cover most anything. Yeah, vendor insurance, there you go.
Not in an amount, but Amy Wright, White brought up a good point. Because she's going through something right now with a playground equipment.
Mm-hmm.
So, that isn't going to be a booth liability, that's full liability. Like general liability, is that what you're saying? Jacqueline, would you be interested in just like calling around and seeing, like, number one, what's the cost and what are their, um, uh.
General policies or whatever, yeah.
So that, I mean, because I don't wanna put this in there and then it'd be like, yeah, you PTOs now get to raise money so you can have insurance.
Yeah.
That's not cool, so.
Yeah, I can, I have a very good insurance guy.
Rex. He's our guy.
Um, so I can ask him.
Okay.
Um, so like general liability, insurance coverage, what's a typical?
Just give them in a, like a PTA and a booster, like, and, because you have, you have elementaries, which, I mean, they put on their open houses, right? That's really, and then you have high schools that put on bigger, you know, events.
But the booster club isn't a PTA, it's a booth.
Right, but that's, I'm just giving, give the live scenario, I don't think there's that much of a difference.
I could probably email to, just like, whatever the national PTA is and ask them, like, what's, what coverage do you guys provide to PTAs?
Right.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Put it together.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we'll still send that out, yeah.
Get the links in here for that sort of stuff, so if they pull up the policy, they could just click and go.
Yeah. We're gonna give them information, Doc.
Yeah.
Things to consider.
Yeah, cause we just don't want that to be a hardship to people.
Yeah, and we, that was a huge part of the conversation initially.
I do agree a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, well, that wasn't an easy one. Um, I think we gotta go down, like going up is not gonna.
That's the end of it.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to make it simple.
Yeah, you did.
So I, do we wanna just end early, cause otherwise we're gonna get into, uh, our enrollment and that's gonna be, we can start, but.
Can you tell me what the, um, what the law language is now here in Idaho for the enrollment?
So basically, there is no, I mean, the gist of it, there's really no defined borders in the sense of if a parent is in Coeur d'Alene and wants to be able to come to Lakeland, they have the ability to put in a request to do that, we can't just deny it solely because you're out of district. But districts are allowed to, but the pushback from the district is, then, you know, potentially you could have several Coeur d'Alene families wanting to come in, but it's our taxpayers that are paying for Lakeland and it's not Coeur d'Alene families paying for Lakeland. Um, and so, the law reads that districts can put a cap on numbers for class sizes with the idea that if you are a Timberlake parent and you live in Timberlake and say you move up to Spirit Lake, I can put a cap at a fifth grade classroom of twenty-five, but if I have a Spirit Lake family that moves in, I'm allowed to take Spirit Lake, but I can say I'm capping this number, so any out of district can't come in, so we can somewhat contain, cause otherwise your class sizes would be out of control.
I know, can you imagine, I can't even imagine, yeah.
So what we have to do in this policy is determine, put in back, cause when we wrote this, we closed our borders, when we did that, what, two years ago, a year and a half ago? Um, the borders were closed, we have to re, kind of rewrite that, cause it's, they're no longer closed borders per se, but then we also have to put those per capita numbers in there so that, and we have to post those numbers four times a year, just this is what, this is what our openings are and this is what our cap numbers are, um, so, I mean, the, the.
It's like how private schools do. Is there any language as to, uh, how you pick who gets to come into your, is it first come, first served? It has, it does, do we know what other places are starting to write or do?
So there's conversation, like lots of people do a lottery, and I think we'll have to, that'll, that's where, this is gonna be a meaty one, cause we will have to talk about that, is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do lotteries.
Well, Charter School, yeah. Lot of people, and, and so, like, some of the guidance that we've had is they do a lottery and it's kind of a, you know, you're looking at grades, you're looking, I mean, but then, are you?
Or is it just a picking out of a hat?
At, at this point, though, inter-district kids get preference for outside, I mean, obviously you're gonna place a kid who's in Lakeland two-seven-two.
The recommendation that we're going under and, and unless the board does something different is, is we will put our numbers somewhat low, because we do wanna buffer for in-district kids, so like, we're not going to, what we don't wanna have happen is I've moved right across the street from, you know, Betty Kiefer, but then I have, I've accepted five, I've posted my numbers and I've accepted five Coeur d'Alene and now I have no room for the one child that I'm actually supposed to be serving.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to accommodate all of that, isn't that your, yeah, so, that's, that's why I feel like this one is gonna be meaty, we need to get it dialed in, um, we have to post those numbers. Um, but we already have parents, I mean, from the moment that law was going into effect, we had, even before it was, we had parents requesting to be able to do zones, um, and now that it is, I mean, we're already getting flooded with, uh, zone requests, so.
So can Timberlake, according to this, so someone in Timberlake can come to Lakeland too? Yeah, and will those, will, will we give preferential treatment to that? Oh, yeah, everyone's got their reasons though, don't they? Yeah, why they wanna do whatever they wanna do.
Yeah, we have to decide that, what are those parameters are.
What does, yeah. I know, and living up where I live, you know, there's a lot of people in Bonner County, in Boundary, that want to come here to Timberlake and, and they're closer to it, I mean, they're just a five-minute drive versus a forty-five-minute drive to San Pointe or Priest or whatever else, yeah. And you can't blame them. And then if what, what if one kid gets in and then the other three of their kids don't get in?
Well, in the other opinion, it's, it's once you've accepted, going into the second year, they're, they're yours, so it's no longer a, they're no longer considered an out of district, so
Gotcha.
If we were to accept, you know, two years in a row, essentially they are ours.
Gotcha.
So you don't get to come back later and say, you know, even if they lived in Priest, they, once we've accepted it to, and, so we just need to incorporate what those caps are going to be, but I think there's probably language we have to change too, because.
Well, see, and I'm not sure how we can modify the class size, because they're all according to IDAPA.
Yeah.
We're not sure to.
Feel like when I was asked to bring that up, it was more of a, let's look at it in conjunction and then um, see if there's any changes that we're doing, are we gonna, do we wanna add the cap numbers on there as well? So I tried to pull everything that was connected to that.
Right, and I don't, I mean, cause we're already, I mean, we're so out of line anyway, it would be.
So then these are the ISB updates specific to that policy?
These ones are, okay.
Remember, they had four different options when we, yeah.
Are these already our policies now, three-ten, A-one?
We have policies that are, but this is ISBA's updates, specific to the new language.
Oh, ISBA. Oh, gotcha, okay.
Lynn, for the, if you're accepted two years in a row and you're, then you're golden, is that also for just zone transfers?
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair to not do that, I mean, I'm an advocate of, you know, unless there's some big exception, but once you're accepting, like, it's hard to, you get super connected to that community, you know?
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
They're saying go down to twenty, which is fine.
Uh, I, yeah, that's more appropriate. Would it be helpful if I, cause there might be some additional updates to this one, um, and there's different forms, I just don't know, we wanna convolute it, like if I go, um, well, you have the latest update, right?
Well.
There were multiple.
Yeah, there's one here from June the fifth, so I would think this is a live.
It is, yeah, but I think there's PA twos and threes.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
That's what I'm saying, is there's more options than just that one, which one is this thirty-ten? I'm gonna tell you right now, so there's thirty-ten, A-one. There's thirty-ten, A-two.
So with the open enrollment, what are they trying to achieve?
To.
Uh, Governor Little, Governor Little felt he wanted to champion on parent choice, so that's the purpose of.
Oh, so this is his version of school choice? So this one, and I don't, I do think you need to look at these options, it's not increasing population, it's a lot more.
It's gonna be a huge mess.
Huge mess.
Yes, they will, yeah.
In good district.
We're not, we're not choosing ours.
That's what I. So.
I mean, what does it say?
I don't know what the, we'd have to put them somewhere aside.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I be a hero for a moment?
Always.
I found on the Idaho PTA, cause first I went to the national PTA folks, and they said, check with your state PTA. So I went to this Idaho state one and they literally have on their application for like becoming a member of their PTA, an insurance form, and there's a box here that says, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually for their insurance package that includes a million dollar general liability and twenty-five thousand dollar fidelity bond.
Nice.
And that's all that's required.
Perfect. So get all the PTAs to do this.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want me to send you this link?
And since I write a big fat check to our PTA every year, they can take my check in.
You forge that pretty quickly.
Yeah. Put this one to bed real quick. Lynn, should I just send it to you?
Yeah.
Sorry, I sidetracked, I was like, I'm really excited.
No, no.
Good news.
Okay, so which one is that, four-two-hundred is going out to parents? Good job. Well done.
Oh, this form?
Did you send it to the company?
Yes, I did.
Oh, wait, that's the company?
This is the company, this is the Idaho State PTA. It is their insurance premium form, or they just call their insurance form, so either way.
And I'm gonna do my part.
So you got the million, do you want the twenty-five thousand fidelity bond in there too?
Okay. Well, the major thing is that one district's just.
Liability.
Insurance.
Okay.
And then we'll need to, you'll have to work with Olivia and show her how we clean it up when we send it out, cause we don't send it out to parents with all this.
She wants to start taking the lead, so we're gonna walk through all of this and I'll have her do it all.
You do? Thank you, we're not like a year in this. Awesome.
Just a month.
You are so talented, I know, sorry, I doubt it's being watched. I'll be quiet.
Okay, so do we want to try to tackle or do we wanna end early, what do we wanna do?
Well, it's tackled, I wrote a million dollars.
I was talking about the enrollment.
Right, in two million, five million.
Can we table it, cause I wanna go and do some research on the open enrollment.
Yeah, okay, goodbye.
Yeah. If I understand it. Anyway, I'm saying, yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll end early, it's.
Go ahead.